Speak in seventh order prior to final passage of this piece of legislation.
I make a motion to appoint Councilman Perry as temporary chair for the Committee on Public Works.
Second.
On the question, all is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, so move. Dispense with reading of the minutes?
Third order, 3A, no business at this time.
Do any council members have announcements at this time?
I have one announcement. Tomorrow, March 3rd, the NEPA Animal Society will have their annual St. Patrick's Day gathering. It's going to be 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It's going to be located at the Scranton Dunmore Fraternal Order of Police Lodge at 401 Railroad Avenue in Scranton. The event's going to be catered by Castaldi's Market of Nuka. There'll be bagpipers, Irish step dancers. Music will be provided by Dan the Piano Man. It's a $30 per person event and it is BYOB. That's all I have.
Thank you. The Little Sisters of the Poor will have their annual St. Patrick's Day dinner. It'll be Sunday, May 5th. It's 12 to 4 and the cost is $12 at the door. I also was contacted by the Bethel Lamie Church of Scranton and they are currently planning an inspiring gospel jazz outdoor experience we held on July 22nd, 2017. And they sent us this message, "Our mission is to encourage community and fellowship while raising much-needed funds for our church. Our event soundstage will be located at the church, 714-716 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, PA. The street will be blocked off between Pine and Gibson Streets during the event. Bethel Lamie Church is looking for sponsors who can assist in the startup of this faith-based community venture. We are a small church with a huge faith in the Lord, community, and as our partners in creating an event that will inspire and encourage all." So we'll be publicizing this more as the year goes on, but I'm very excited for this, another great downtown event and festival.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hodewanis?
Joan Hodewanis, citizen and taxpayer. I'd like to remind everybody that the Friends of the Scranton Public Library are currently conducting their quarterly book sale at the marketplace at Steamtown, second floor, right in front of the Crunch Gymnasium. And it will run through Sunday at 5:00 PM. It's a good deal for everybody. All the proceeds will go to support children's programs. 250 days to the general election on November 7th. Do you know where your Arcadis study is on stormwater management costs? Still waiting for that shoe to drop. 120 days to June 30th, the deadline for the 2016 audit, which ought to be a milestone. And I would strongly encourage every member of the public who has the time and interest to come to council chambers, 6:30 PM on Tuesday, March 7th, if you have questions or concerns regarding Scranton's financial condition as PEL is holding a public hearing. And this affects every taxpayer in Scranton. Have all five council members had an opportunity to be briefed by the administration with respect to the planned distribution of the sewer authority sale proceeds?
Not yet, no.
Okay, do you know when that will be completed, that process?
Actually, right now what we're planning is a type of a public session in lieu of those meetings.
Okay. Do you have a date?
Let me put it this way, the opportunity to meet with the administration will still be available to council people if they choose to do it that way, but we are working on a plan to come up with a public work session.
Have you have a date in mind for the work session?
I do, but it's not confirmed yet, so I don't want to say it yet. It will be soon, though.
Okay, I'm looking forward to that. And what about that Magnus Opus of Magnus Opai, the RFP for the third-party administration of the pension plans?
It's moving at a snail's place, but it is moving.
I remind you that on March 18th, it will be one year since Mayor Courtwright made a press statement, released a press statement that he would use a third-party administrator immediately. I don't understand his definition of the word immediately. I obviously don't have enough education. Okay, and any update on any proposals for other pension reforms? Disability pensions, anything?
I have some information on the double pensions I'll mention during motions.
Please do, please do.
And we're going to request a meeting with Mr. Durkin, the attorney for the pension boards, as we discuss in our caucus. And at that time, we're going to drill down on pension reforms that he feels is necessary as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Hopefully, that will come about within the next week or two. I always also remember, remind the general public, tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM here will be a special meeting of the Non-Uniform Pension Board. And I understand that Attorney Durkin will announce the recommendations of the two hearing officers with regards to the 22 or so people who are still receiving double pensions. That should be very interesting. I can't be here, but I hope other members of the public will attend. And Granicus, Granicus, wherefore art thou Granicus? Has the public got access yet?
No, are they?
Can we get a refund?
No, I think next week is when it goes online live, right?
See, yeah, it's still, right now, as you see, we all brought our iPads out tonight. And it's not to watch television, it is to practice using the new agenda and backup. So we are trying to see how it works and we're kind of fumbling our way through.
But I understand one of the major objectives was to give the general public access electronically.
Yes.
And I'm still waiting for that.
Yeah, this is our dry run tonight and we expect it by next week to be out for the public.
That's why Mr. Gahn's not here today. He didn't want to ask that question. And last time I looked on the city's website, I did not see the controller's latest report on their website. Somebody, please ask IT if they could post that for the month of January. The only one on their website is, the last one posted is December. I think they haven't posted it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny Srebro?
Lenny Srebro, Scranton resident. I have some entertainment for you guys tonight.
Thank you.
Geez, I'll bet you at least one of yous were thinking of me during the storms Saturday. Well, it's the worst ever. You know, next year I was planning on buying a car, a new car, but I'm thinking about getting a boat this time. I mean, it's really funny anymore, you know, like that. It's so bad. That now, the worst thing that happened is, in those pictures, the curb in front of my house has a water drainage pipe inside the curb, like on my property there. I apologize for the poor quality pictures. It's from a phone camera that my granddaughter calls it a fossil. But anyway, now that pipe broke and we had, and it was like a gusher coming up. All that water that's supposed to be draining down that pipe now comes up. It doesn't even make it to the retention pond where that 36-inch pipe is blocked there. Of course, it made its way right into my cellar, you know, so all the water runoff was coming directly into the cellar. I'm telling you, I had a six-inch hole open up that the water was directly coming in. Of course, my cellar got flooded. The pump I had ready happened to fail. I called DPW about the gusher there and the flooding. One of the guys from DPW contacted the fire department to come and pump out my cellar. Nobody ever came. So here I am in the middle of the storm, running up to Home Depot for another pump. You know, what a mess. Like I said, the DPW came out determined, you had a pipe broke, it ruptured, and it's shooting up in the air. So you know what? I got out of it. Instead of repairing it in any way, they told me they'll bring sandbags. Now, you know what? They brought sandbags, not with sand in them. So now I gotta go get sand. It's crazy, ridiculous. You know, I feel like I'm a drowning victim and you guys are all standing there and you won't even throw me a life preserver. I mean, that's what I feel like. I'm not saying it's that way, but geez, how much do we have to go through to get some kind of results? I always hear that, you know, you're waiting to hear from other power people. But geez, you know, this has been going on 20 to 40 years, depending on the neighbors that you talk to. But only in the last five years, it's gotten so much worse, especially since they finished the Kaiser Avenue project. Something has changed that we get so much more water. So what do I do now? The drainage pipe that ruptured, I'm gonna get it all next rain. It's gonna come right into my yard and open up another hole. I had a poor modified down that hole. You could see the pictures of my basement running down the walls. Now on top of that, what's happening in that alley that's completely washed out, the garbage trucks are trying to avoid the deep ruts and they're coming on my property, really ruining the property because those heavy garbage trucks now are going on my saturated lawn. And I'm telling you, it's a nightmare when I'm putting up with it and I hear all these, you know, we're waiting to hear, but like I said, 20 to 40 years now. How much longer is it gonna take? One last thing. During the storm, my brother came to help me pump out the cellar. We took a video. I have a fire stick of the actual storm, everything that was going on there, all the flooding and all of that. I don't know how the caucuses work, but can we? Now, I really do want this back, you know, this is documenting the flood. But can we set it up somehow to have a caucus before the meeting? I don't know how that works, really. To view this, and it's only a five-minute video, but to view this and I could explain what's going on in the video.
Yeah, we could probably play it on the television in Mrs. Reed's office.
Yeah, you need a USB port to just put that in, but it's a five-minute video. But if I can be part of it, I could explain what you're looking at, you know?
Yeah, and we will follow up. Since DPW was there on, did you say on Saturday they came or Sunday?
Yeah, they came. You know, like I said, I got that hole now, you know, that next time it rains, it's gonna come right into the yard.
We'll contact Director Gallagher and find out who was there and what they saw and see if it's a repair. That should be something now that it's thawed, it's not really frozen anymore. Maybe we can get it out as soon as possible.
Like I said, next time it rains, I'm gonna get it again, you know. I don't know what more to do.
If you want to leave it with Kathy, and then you can pick it up next week, and we could definitely do that.
Okay, if you even want to view it on your own, that's fine, you know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ann Robinson?
Ann Robinson, Scranton homeowner. Mr. President and city council members, good evening. I have a concern. The lot adjacent to my house is an empty lot. The woman who owned it, the property, is deceased. And I don't know the status of the current owners, if there are any. I have been in communication with Councilman Gahn since last summer about this concern as last year the grass was over 10 feet tall. I have an enclosed area in my yard for my animals. I can sit out there, I can read, I can crochet, I can drink my coffee, I can say my rosary. Life is simple. I know the grass is there. The grass is not the problem. The problem is the snake population. Last summer, I had snakes coming onto my property and they were also coming onto my front hedges. Now, I can take sulfur powder, I can get some type of snake deterrent, sprinkle it around my property on this one side, but this is like a Band-Aid treatment for the real problem. The snakes have returned. Last Saturday, we had unusually warm temperatures. I had a snake on my property. Unfortunately, my first impulse was that I was gonna catch it and show it to you, but I decided against that and I killed it and it was 13 inches long, a good, healthy-sized one. The front of this property is very, very active. Parents are walking their children to grade school, to Francis Willard. We have students going to West Middle and West High School and they are going right up this property. I know snakes don't attack unless they are threatened, but you know, this could be an accident waiting to happen. And I'm gonna tell you, the next sunny day we have, please feel free to come over to my house because when the sun is shining and the snakes, you can tell the snakes are out and about because the squirrels go right up to the roof of the house, aim for the lot, and they start barking voraciously. So I know, be careful where you walk. Most people don't like snakes and I get this, my sister included. They need to live, they serve a purpose, but we don't need to have them infecting our neighborhood. I ask your help for the following areas. Please help me identify the owners of this property. If no one owns it and the city owns it, then the city should be responsible. If I maintain my property like this, I would be cited. Also, is there any type of program to help get the grass cut? And then thirdly, do you have any type of program under the Animal Control Act here at the city where they can come and they can help eliminate the snakes? Thank you for your time.
Okay, before you go, I'm over here, right here. I know the sound in here is terrible. Have you reported this to the License and Inspection Department at all?
I had them at my house last year, sir.
I'm sorry?
They were at my home last year.
Okay. We do have an animal control officer. Have they been out to the property at all?
No.
Okay, we can contact them and see if snakes are in their purview. I think they probably are, so maybe we can have them take a look at that for you as well. License and inspections, if they were out there, they should have did some investigation to find out who owns the property, so.
Sir, what they did was, the person on the other side of me, they decided to condemn their property. Is it old and decrepit? Yes, sir, but the snakes aren't coming from that direction.
Right.
Snakes are cold-blooded animals and they need the sunshine. And his property, he does maintain the grass and it's all, you know, where the snakes wouldn't be. They're coming this way. They're coming over from the empty lot.
Can we get the address?
Yeah, if you could give us the specific address, the first thing we can check is if it's in possession of a bank. If it's a foreclosed property, the bank is responsible for maintaining that property.
The house next to it was foreclosed and there is a realty company that does own that one. But as far as this empty lot, it's like a lost child, nobody wants it.
Well, that's the first place that I would start. If it's a foreclosed property, if it's part of that, then the bank is responsible for taking care of it. We have something in place now to make that happen. So if you would leave the specific address for Kathy?
Surely.
And then we can, that's where I'll start, to see if it's on the foreclosed.
I do thank you for your time and your concern.
All right, thank you.
And just one quick question before we go. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to ask, would this be, if it is an abandoned lot, is it something that you would be interested in purchasing?
No, but thank you, sir. I have all I can do to pay my own taxes. If I were physically able to cut the grass, it would be cut.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to double-check. Thank you. Jeff Zick?
I'm Jeff Zick, Pennsylvania Cannabis Rally. Mr. Gahan isn't here. Mr. Perry, there's a subsidence starting below the road in Providence Avenue and West Olive Avenue, near Catch Basin. Chunk of blacktop's gone, looks like it's washing underneath the road there, thank you.
I heard Providence Road, what was that?
An olive, West Olive.
Oh, West Olive.
There's a little concrete divide right there, right where the end of the road is. Cannabis and the Gateway Theory. The basis of this myth, where lab mice given synthetic version of THC showed a heightened behavioral response. Most people understand that synthetic THC is not natural THC and mice are not humans, including the district attorney and the police chief. The Gateway Theory is a proven myth. The NIH, National Institute of Health, and the National Institute of Drug Abuse, excuse me, even say the majority of people who use marijuana do not go on to use other harder substances. All right, on the issue of the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant, JAG. Homeland Security through the Department of Justice federalizes your police with programs like JAG. I quote Michelle Alexander's book, The New Jim Crow. The Byrne Program was designed to encourage every federal grant recipient to help fight the war on drugs. Millions of dollars in federal aid have been offered to the state and local law enforcement agencies willing to wage this war. End of quote. At the end of the fiscal year, a state's criminal justice agency must submit a state annual report to the federal government indicating how the Byrne funds were spent, using certain performance measures to show productivity and qualified for renewed funding. Small possession of cannabis is overall the most frequent arrest and conviction cited as performance measurements reported by states who use JAG. JAG uses federal dollars as an incentive for local police forces to continue prohibition of cannabis, a plant that shouldn't be on a schedule of controlled substances at all. It doesn't even meet the definition of controlled substance. The federal government holds utility patents on medical cannabis, yet it denies its existence keeping it Schedule I, like we have done. Scranton, you're treating your cannabis users like heroin users. If you wanted to be tough on heroin, it would show in your stats. The stats show your police spend large chunk of their resources violating cannabis users, especially the 6% of black citizens in this city that make up 38% of the small possessions arrests last year. You're on record pace with heroin deaths. You know it is wrong conflating heroin and cannabis for money. Scranton should not involve itself in filling mental health treatment centers with cannabis users because heroin hits home. This use of federal grants to fight heroin, yet go after cannabis users, is deception. Cannabis should be excluded from the JAG program scope. Once again, I urge council to decriminalize small possessions of cannabis within the city. It's clogging up the courthouse, jailhouse, treatment centers, and help needed by these heroin addicts. The truth, and once again, your time. We urge the Narcotics Division of the Scranton Police to replace the badges that include the cannabis leaf, needles, and a skull to something more professional like other divisions. Scranton boasts Baltimore's use of federal drug dollars. Today, national news stations reported that seven Baltimore police officers are in court for stealing money off people filing bogus police search warrants and falsifying police reports. The Baltimore Police Commissioner says this is a, quote, "a pattern of practice that undoubtedly existed within the organization for many, many years," end quote. Don't let Scranton go down this road. There's a solution and let's be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Bolus?
Good evening, Council, Bob Bolus, Scranton. You know, today in the paper, had the individual with the water issues. I brought those people here. If you recall, Mr. Wexler, you told me I couldn't speak on their behalf. I had to sit here and be silent while they pled their issues. And you see the issues they still have. It's a travesty that this city does not take it upon themselves to go in, do the repairs, Judge Gibbons' hearing, who is responsible for all this nonsense, and this is going on for years. Go in, do the job, finish it, give them what they're entitled to as taxpayers in this city, and bill whoever is the responsible party. I mean, let's get forward, let's get this mayor outside of his little circle, let him look at what's going on here and take care of the people in this community. I mean, they shouldn't have to be in the paper time and time after again, this individual just left here. We got the equipment, the manpower, and we sure and hell have all the money now to spend all over this stupid place. Go on, fix up the people and take care of them. That's what you need to start doing, and that's what this mayor needs to start doing. Instead of running around playing stupid games that we're doing here, squandering millions on legal fees and not knowing what the heck we're signing. You know, nothing is more disturbing than to see a recovery plan that was signed by Joe and the rest of the people here, Gahan, who's not here tonight, and then see you guys in the paper, "We want accountability, we want to know this, we want to know that." What do you want to know? You should have known it before you ever let it get to where it is. Okay, you're squandering millions, you don't know what legal fees cost, you don't know what they're charging in their hourly rates. Everybody here is clueless. Now you want to have backdoor meetings, back to the old city Scranton policy of let's talk in private, let's talk in the back door. No, I want the mayors, but right here, with this council, under those cameras, no more backdoor stuff because we're not informed. We're only informed what you believe we should get, what we should hear. We're the ones that pay you people, you don't pay us. So I'm here and now saying that I want, I insist, as a taxpayer and a resident of this city, that no more backdoor meetings with one or two councilmen or whatever the heck you guys want to play. We want it right here. You're squandering millions and millions of our dollars. You gave Basalega almost $7 million. Was that smart to do? You think that was smart to help him compete? And rape the people in the city, a city that's broke? And you give the guy the money to pay for his mall and then sell him a garage for a dollar and pay $2 billion-plus dollars to help him fix it? You think that's smart, intelligent business? I think it's the dumbest damn thing I ever saw. And everything I'm seeing here is pure ignorance of what it takes to run a city and take care of the people in this community. You're blind, you guys have no clue what's going on. And sure and hell, the mayor doesn't because he wouldn't be doing what he was doing if he was a mayor who had any common sense to look and see what's going wrong in this city. Millions of dollars between the sewer authority and the parking garage. You guys are blown away. You have no plan, no concept. Don't come now whining and say, "We want accountability." You were accountable. Don't look for an excuse now for the screw-ups you people did. You blew the deal, you blew the informational packages. You signed your names to it. Don't whine about it now, I don't want to hear no more of this. Stand up like men, you screwed it up, figure out how to correct it. But don't allow any more money that this mayor is spending needlessly and stupidly, without any direction. What you should have did was ordered a forensic audit, day one, before you spent one bloody penny because you guys have no clue what's going on. And the mayor sure and heck doesn't. And neither do the lawyers that are there, they're just writing checks. Menozzi, what's he know? He's a banker. Bankers don't make businesses. They sit there because it's protected, it's safe. Remember that. They don't invest, that's why they're there. They're not out doing their thing, they're investing somebody else's capital and they don't know everything about everything. They're not God, that's for sure. You know, we come around and we do all this stuff. You need to turn around and plan what we're going because the assets are gone. And when they're gone, Joe, no matter what you cry about, what Gahan cries about in the paper, it's a reelection, whatever the heck it may be, it's not the solution to the problems. On Saturday, I'm holding and sponsoring a pro-Trump rally. pro-Trump rally at Lackawanna County Courthouse, Saturday from 12 to 4 o'clock, and everyone's invited, whether you're a Democrat or you're a Republican, because you have a president. He's your commander in chief. And what I saw the other night with those people, those women coming in dressed in white, sitting on their butts like the parade of the virgins, whatever it was, like they had no sins about them, disrespecting-
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
...the President of the United States.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
I expect to see each and every one of you people start representing us as Americans should stand up and follow where we're going.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
And do the job as we're put here to do, and maybe we'll move forward, because you took us backwards.
Anyone else?
Andy Sprigot, citizen of Scranton, fellow Scrantonians. I hope I got the mic at the right spot this time so you could all hear what I'm saying.
Sounds good so far.
That's all that counts. It's not only you. I've been stopped many times when people says, "We can't quite understand what you're trying to come across with," because the mic is a little muffled. As you know, there's a lot of scuttlebutt about the sewer authority deal, money-wise, lawyers making huge fees and so forth and so on, having $70 million instead of the $96, whatever. But believe me, that's small pittance compared to the parking. The parking deal was the worst deal ever made. You cannot believe how much it's going to cost, just in lost revenue. I keep, I can't repeat it enough until I get it into this citizen's mind of what actually was done. We lost over $3 million in parking revenue and parking fines for 40 years. That's $120 million out of the coffers of the city. I don't know who's responsible for the $300,000 a year we have to pay to the garage that we sort of leased. Why we leased the garage and then turn around and tear down parts of other garages is beyond me, but that's the way the city works. Somebody made out very well on these deals, but the citizens did not. I keep saying, contact your senator, state legislator, even the governor, and ask for an investigation of this deal. The parking garage that was sold for a dollar, half of it was built at the same time as the mall, costing millions of dollars. We sold it for a dollar. Now, the glow part of the mall, that garage, maybe was in disrepair. I don't doubt that. Concrete collapsed and so forth. But the front part was, it was not condemned. We had never condemned that garage, but yet we sold it for a dollar. Now, who benefited from that? The citizens of Scranton, or by accident, the owner of the mall? Who benefited from the $4.1 million we gave to the mall owner? Who benefits from the $300,000 a year leased of that space? Not only do we pay four and a half, 4.1 million, but we promised them another 300,000 a year. Now, who in their right mind would do that? You can't believe that deals were made. I don't care what you said. There got to be a deal. Nobody in their right mind would do what was done without some kind of a deal. I just hope the company that's running the garages is a nonprofit too. But nobody ever came forward and said they are a nonprofit. The people actually run in the garage. I know you tell me that the people who leased the garages are nonprofit. But the worst part of it is, not one penny of that man's money went into that project. The city paid for the whole deal, one in a lease and the other in the debt. Now, when we figured it all out, we owe more money now than when we did before we leased out the garages. If you can add one and one, you'll get two. Apparently, this administration amused people, couldn't add one and one to get two, because it was glaring right in front of you. Nothing happens by accident. This was a done deal, and there's no question about it, and yous all have to take responsibility for it. I just wish that the governor or one of the legislature would look into this deal, and Pell should be replaced. If they stood by and gave sanctions to this deal, the guy running Pell, the administrator to the city, should be replaced. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxes paid. Um, okay. First, to start off, I'd like to, once again, request that someone find out, or including their questioning, why $12 million in sewer plant upgrades had no value in the final settlement on a sewer plant. It's a lot of money. If the water company could have done it cheaper, then how about a pro-rata? But $12 million spent and $12 million ignored is just a big pill to swallow. As far as mining, once again, last week, last Thursday night, it was miners allowed to throw debris into the streams that we're paying for the right to sit on a throne in our houses. Thanks, federal government. I grew up in a totally devastated landscape. I grew up in a small town in central Pennsylvania, a little south of Cannibals. You ever been to Cannibals, Wayne? Beautiful. Well, I went there when it wasn't much bigger than the city block as a kid, but the whole town was surrounded by calm banks, and there were no streams. There was no water, no drinkable water. It was all piped in from the bare gap water shed. And, I mean, it was just miles of calm dumps and strip mines. And that's what we're signing on to again, so contact your federal government. Tell them that this just isn't acceptable. In fact, we have down in the valley at the old Baker Colery, they had a calm retrieval operation, and it doesn't look like they ever backfilled or did anything or leveled off the land at the very least. Now, this week, we have some gun lunacy. You might not be qualified to sign your own checks, but you can purchase a firearm. Now, I'm a strong Second Amendment person, but there is a limit. Give me a break. Better watch out. They left Hinckley go. Now, tax exempts. Once again, I don't really believe in telling anybody what they should believe or what they shouldn't believe, but as far as tax exempt are concerned, the only thing when I make these comments like I did last week is that simply if you're going to be that type of person that tells people what they should believe, or that we should have ethnic cleansing, or any kind of situation like that, you certainly shouldn't be tax exempt, and it's high time that these people have their tax exemptions lifted. Not on my dime. I don't want to pay more property taxes for somebody else to preach like that. And on the police, I don't know if anybody's seen the articles on out-of-town, surrounding towns, rural towns being covered by state police, and the fact that they don't want to pay for a police force, and of course, we're paying for that too. So, and now we have the federal government looking to turn us into INS police and what have you. I don't think so. We have to resist that. I don't really feel that a sanctuary city is a good idea, and I don't think that paying all the more taxes and putting all the more police on to enforce, enforce INS rules are... They left them in at the border. Now we're supposed to deal with it. I don't think so. And last week, Pat, you mentioned about the money of the sale and pensions. Well, I would recommend that some of that money be put, or a lot of it, in the safe savings until Wall Street. I think Wall Street's about 6,000 points overvalued as far as the Dow, and we're just going to lose it all and be back here in two years raising taxes. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
You know, it's been a long time since I've said this, but it's almost embarrassment to be a resident of this city. When I opened the paper today and saw what this city administration is trying to do to, to do to the Youngs, and what Mr. Serebrow's having to put up with, and that other widow over there, I, God love her, I don't know what happened to her, but I imagine about the same. You know, we've known about the stormwater issues for many, many, many months, and yet, nothing gets done. And I know, Mr. Wexler, you were there. I'm not sure if Mr. Evans was. I don't think anybody else was. When the Scranton Sewer Authority was trying to get people to sign the rights of way presentations, they knew where everything was. They knew where all the stormwater was. They knew where all of the wastewater lines were. And, and they were touting the fact that they were going to, that you, you had to sign this, well, you had to sell them for $100, their rights of way to their, to the property, so that if anything ever happened to the lines and they had to come on them, they would be restored to their original condition. And now, we tell somebody, maybe, you know, this might be your problem? I don't think so. It's just an embarrassment that we would even try to pull something like that on these people. So I can hardly wait. And this is another thing. I don't know if it's just sloppy, or, or if you guys have been telling us stories, but again, for many, many months, you've been telling us, "Oh yeah, we didn't have nothing to do with the sewer authority sale. No, no assets. But boy, when that money comes in, we, it's ours to do with what we want." Well, last week, you decided to give away how many tens of millions of dollars? I'm not saying that it was wrong. I'm just saying it was sloppy. Did you vote on it? No.
We approved it. That was approved in the budget. The debt, the payment on the, reducing the debt was approved in the budget.
I'm not even going to go there right now, but I'll pick that up again. Believe me, I'll pick that up again. Moving along then. Mr. Evans, did you check yet to see whether the Airbnb, all the Airbnbs are paying the business privilege and-
Yeah, I'll discuss that motion.
Okay, that will be fine. And would you please share what you consider the minimum reform to pensions for you to put money from the sewer asset sale?
I'm still developing those. There's, there's more than minimum. So I have quite a long list, and we're also going to meet with Attorney Durk, and I want to get his input as well on some of the things that need to be done. Obviously, the third-party administrator is number one. That has to be in place, and its concentration has to be relative to disability pensions. That's a high priority.
Okay, I'll look forward to the complete list. Now, back on January 26th, 28th, excuse me, 2016, that's well over a year ago, you authorized that contract, this is about the fourth time I brought it up, with Muni Services, and they were going to provide online financial data presentment services. As many times as I brought it up, has anybody checked to see what the status of that is? Have you seen any presentment of financial status in understandable English for the average payer of taxes in this city? Why do you rush into doing, giving contracts, multi-year contracts, and then not even follow up to see if the work's been done? I just don't understand what you're about. It's crazy. And the other one, in April of last year, you passed File of Council 21 defining and authorizing tax exemptions from real property tax in order to improve deteriorating real property in certain areas of the city. How many qualified permits have been pulled?
I can check that for you.
Pardon?
I'll check that and see where we're at.
I think we should get that on a, on a regular basis.
Yeah, I've been asking for it, but I don't think they're flooding in yet, so hopefully we'll have some.
I'll be back next week, hopefully with better voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dominic Gonzillo, Scranton. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm just here on, on behalf of the Greenridge Neighbor Association. I'm the vice president. I'm just here to show support for the Kennedys and Youngs. I think everybody knows what's going on, so I won't stand here and rewrite the will, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Kara Sightzinger, City of Scranton, resident and member of the Greenridge Neighborhood Association. It wasn't until this afternoon that Mark Sightzinger, the president of the Neighborhood Association, who's unable to be here tonight, was able to send an email trying to gather support for the Youngs to come and attend the council meeting. Obviously, our last update from the Youngs at our neighborhood meeting was that he did not think that the hearing was going to occur yesterday because of the planning commission, the, the codicil that they had, that the planning commission meeting should have occurred first. Without belaboring it, obviously, if that was the city's stance, then the planning commission should have had a hearing a year ago. So it almost seems as if, I know the money was set aside, and it appeared to everybody that it was done in good faith, but it appears as though it was just to stall the process. We all know that the flooding isn't in the past. People have said, "Oh, Greenridge is only complaining now." They haven't been. And we know that the flooding has occurred for over 30 years. They're antiquated water systems. But now, the stormwater system underneath the Youngs' property, Riser Court, which would be along where the late Harry McGrath lived, that entire street may fall. The Kennedy's property, the Youngs' property, it is the size of their living room, and it's very bad. It was Phase 2, obviously, of the Meadowbrook construction project that never occurred, but on behalf of our Neighborhood Association, we invite everybody to attend citywide, because I know that at the summit meeting, many other neighborhood groups asked us for some input, or Nick and Mark, and they're all invited March 14th, 625 Deacon Street in Scranton, in Greenridge, right up the street from Burnettty's Pizza. I know Mr. Rogan was there. He knows where that is, just to come, and we're going to discuss and see what we can do to help the Youngs and see what other problems we do have along that area. I also want to point out that when I came in today, I saw a group of students here, high school students. This is their future. They're never going to come back here. That's what we're facing. We can't sell our homes. Our streets are collapsing. Maybe that's the end game, that you want us all underground. I don't know. But these kids-
So, Mrs. Reed, if you could, I know I spoke to Director Gallagher about this, and I know it is scheduled to get done, but if we can just send a letter out, just to see when it's going to be put on the schedule for the vacuum cleanout of that drainage pipe on Maryfield Ave, that would be fantastic. You know, we had very unseasonably warm weather. I mean, you know, a tornado in February just doesn't happen, but that's not an excuse not for us to keep up with what we need to do as a city, and that this is something that we need to get done. Could've held off a couple more weeks where we could've gotten it, absolutely, but, you know, Mother Nature's Mother Nature, and we can't, we can't delay any, any longer. We need to get this taken care of. It's, it's just at that point now where, you know, there's, we just need to get it scheduled, get it taken care of, and move on to a next project, 'cause it's, you know, it's just one thing after another and after another, and we need to start prioritizing our work and taking care of it. You know, Lenny made a couple of other comments. He brought us some pictures. He has a video that I'm very interested in looking at, and, you know, there's no one up here that wants this to continue. I know that wholeheartedly. We just have to get them to the finish line, and, you know, none of us are gonna stop working till we get them there. I did receive a letter from Chief Graziano earlier this week. We made a recommendation to take a look at 16th and Division Street for some speeders and stop signs. There has been numerous police officers at different times and different days inspecting that intersection. At the time, there was no citations given. He did not see any. There was no speeding indicated. There was no stop sign, no one was running stop signs. That's not to say that it doesn't happen, but during the times that there's been police officers monitoring that intersection, there was not any violations at the time. So, I just wanted to give everybody a follow-up on that, and that's all I have for this week.
Thank you. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, a number of items. First, regarding the stormwater situation, and this pertains to West Mountain and Kaiser Valley. I did receive a letter this week, and it's actually from a resident on the West Mountain who paid to have a engineer come out and do a study. So, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, 'cause it is a little bit lengthy, but in summary, from this engineer's report, and it is sealed, the overall total to address the issue on the mountain is about $108,900. That's what this one engineer believes. Obviously, the issue in Kaiser Valley starts on West Mountain. The water runs down, it creates, creates a bigger problem. So, this, this letter, they do ask that we use some of the sewer proceeds to fix this issue. I will provide this after the meeting. Mrs. Reed, if we could please pass this along to, to the DPW, as well as the mayor's office, asking that this is given full consideration regarding the use of the sewer proceeds, 'cause I do think relief on West Mountain will bring relief to the folks in the valley as well. Also, regarding the storm on Saturday, that was certainly one of the worst storms I think we ever saw in February, at least in my lifetime. I was at a number of locations in West Side that, again, have been notorious for flooding. As long as I've remembered, these areas would flood out, and you wouldn't be able to travel through them. Our DPW did do a good job getting out and trying to act as quickly as they can, and I have received a number of concerns from residents following the storm, where roads were washed out, gutters were washed out. They've all been passed along to the DPW, and I know fixing these issues has become a top priority. I've seen, seen the DPW out making some of these repairs already. I know there's a lot more that, that need to be made. Next, some bad news. Received a memo from OECD this week, and it says, "Subject: Write off of loans for Steamtown Mall Partners and Mall Associates in the 2016 audit. Due to the foreclosures against Steamtown Mall Partners and Steamtown Mall Associates, it's probably prudent to write off the following loans for the 2016 audit. Steamtown Mall Associates UDAG loan in the amount of $1.7 million. Steamtown Mall Partners UDAG loan in the amount of $11.3 million. Steamtown Mall Associates CDBG loan in the amount of $1 million. Steamtown Mall Associates EDZ loan in the amount of $750,000. Scranton Mall Associates DCA loan in the amount of $1.1 million. And another Mall Partners DCA loan in the amount of 7 point, almost 7.8 million dollars." The total for these loans is $23,698,500. It says, "A journal entry will be made to credit loans receivable in that amount and debit loan allowance for the same amount." It says it will have, it will have no effect on net income for OECD. Due to the significant amount of bad loans, OECD would like each person receiving this memo to sign off." So, that's some, some bad news on the economic development front from loans that I've talked about quite a bit through the years at these meetings. Regarding pensions, and particularly the double pension issue, we did receive a very lengthy report. It is marked as confidential, as attorney-client privileged. As we discussed in our caucus, we are going to have Attorney Durkin come in from the pension board to brief council and to brief the public on what's going on with the double pension issue. And as far as pension reforms go, I know myself, and I'm sure my colleagues will touch on this as well, we're very upset reading regarding a disabled police officer doing police work in another area. That shouldn't be the case. There's many people that are on disability that are truly disabled, and bad apples that take advantage of the system give them all a bad name. So, we need to make sure there's processes in place so this does not happen again. The pension funds are severely distressed, and we certainly can't have somebody who's capable of doing police work on a police disability pension doing police work in another county. So, that's something I think needs to be tightened up as far as pension reforms go. And the double pension issue, obviously, council has, has been working on this for quite a while, and there's gonna be much more to come on that issue in, in coming weeks. Two other issues, it was brought up, and I did receive a couple of emails. I know the Scranton Times covered this already. I know there's a petition going around to name Scranton as a sanctuary city. A few people contacted me, asking what my position on that was. I completely oppose the idea of making Scranton a sanctuary city where we would risk losing federal funds, and additionally, our police department does an amazing job. They're the professionals. They know what they're doing when it comes to, to these type of policies. So, I think we, we need to be in accordance with federal law. The same thing for issues that were raised regarding the city's position regarding cannabis and other drug programs. The city does not make laws regarding drugs. We follow the federal guidelines, and if the federal government says a certain substance is banned, it's banned. We don't have the authority to supersede the federal government. And finally, one item, and I just received a message on this. If we could send a letter to Director Hinton, the old Penswood Manor in South Scranton has been operating as a rehab facility for a number of years. It didn't go through the zoning processes. They were given a drop dead date of March 1st to wind down all of their activities, and I did just receive a message from one of the members of the Southside Neighborhood Association that they are still operating. So, we are into March 2nd now, and they're still operating, so the city is gonna have to go over there and take some action. So, that is all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. The current status of the rental registration ordinance, there are approximately 11,700 bills that will be going out. There's some final tweaks that are being done to the registration form in the law department, and then they will be released. I'll have a more update on that next week. Ms. Schumacher has been asking about the Airbnb issue and the mercantile tax. A letter has been sent to the Single Tax Office inquiring about that, but I'll be honest, I, I don't expect that we are collecting the mercantile tax, and the reason why is, number one, we don't even define this use in our zoning code. Secondly, most cities that have an Airbnb situation have a hotel tax, and the Airbnb company, type companies collect the hotel tax and then pay directly to the municipality. So, that might be an avenue we would go. But first, we have to get to the zoning code, because we have to find a way to make sure that we balance this use, which isn't going away, with protecting the neighborhoods, because I think the example in Greenridge is a perfect example that there is a risk that they may ultimately be approved because it's not in the zoning code, and that's a big concern of mine. But I think if we legislate it properly, put it in place with that protects the neighborhoods along recognizing the fact that this is not going away, and it is a business. So, I have a copy of several ordinances with the, throughout Pennsylvania. We'll be looking at those as far as how to collect revenue from these type of operations. So, we'll see where that goes. On the Young building, I'm gonna make a very brief comment. There's a hole in their yard that was created by stormwater. The city is responsible for stormwater. So, for God's sake, step up, fix it, and let's get it done. I'm tired of this issue. I feel so bad for the Youngs. It's embarrassing to this council. We've done everything we could to get this done, so please, put aside whatever the issues are and get it done for this family. It's incomprehensible. On the disability pensions that Councilman Rogan mentioned, as we found out, another disabled police officer is working as a detective in Monroe County, and we've been saying this is an issue for years. We need the necessary reforms through ordinances, state law, and pension boards, so situations like this don't happen again. We have to get control of this and start reducing the absolutely pathetic level of disability pensions in Scranton. 52% in the public sector, or the public safety sector, I should say, when other cities are at the 4% to 6% range. This is a disgrace, and it's an embarrassment. I'll take it one step further. Until I see real pension reforms, until I see a third-party administrator on board whose primary focus will be disability pensions, until I see new laws and ordinances in place to protect and avoid these situations in the future, I will not vote to put any of the sewer proceeds in any pension plans. As far as I'm concerned, the proceeds that might have been put into the pensions can remain parked in a savings account in a local bank, collecting interest, until these issues get the serious attention that they truly deserve. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. As was mentioned earlier, Pennsylvania Economy League will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 7th, in city council chambers. Pell is holding this hearing to receive public comment on the, on the report stating the financial condition of the City of Scranton. The public meeting will begin at 6:30 PM. The storm that occurred on, on Saturday, as everyone mentioned, was, was quite a, quite a shock to us. As a youth, I was told that you never had to worry about a tornado in, in Scranton. It got me through as a young, as a young boy over a fear that I may have had. But the fact that the storm went to the right of 81 instead of the left of 81, the City of Scranton could have been majorly impacted by that tornado. If that tornado had touched down just two miles to the left, it would've been at my house. Another three miles to the left, it would've been in the middle of downtown Scranton. It came upon us very quickly, and I'd like to congratulate the warning system that went off, the National Weather Service, cell phones went off all over the place. I was in the epicenter of the tornado. I was in a Walmart, so the tornadoes kind of find those, and everyone in the Walmart, phones were going off, and people started scrambling. I, I think it made everyone prepared. Saturday evening, I went out, I came down to Fire Headquarters, went out with Mayor Courtrite, took, took a ride around the city to see where some of the major flooding problems were. While we were there, one scary event was about to take place. There was a man missing at Lake Scranton. Right when I got down there, the city was preparing to put together a search party, and fortunately, within the next few minutes of that report, the, the person showed up at the emergency room. Fire crews were out pumping basements. Police were out cornering off the flooded areas. Firefighters were saving people in disabled vehicles. I would encourage people to look back at this storm and think of what you're going to do. Mayor Courtrite and I were on Market Street near McMullins, the former McMullins. The road was barricaded off, and yet, someone drove in to the water while we were standing there. Fortunately, they didn't go in far enough to get stuck, but I, I just don't understand the logic behind people, a small car driving in there. I would encourage that the DPW begin to use some of the equipment that we did receive from the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. As we went through the city and we saw a major part of the problem, and this goes back to something that we've been talking about a long time here also, a lot of leaves, leaves in the storm grates, leaves all over the place. I really do believe that we have to come up with an effective program to remove these leaves, because they are a detriment to the efficient use of, even though our stormwater system is weak, the leaves that are in, in the drainage areas are causing huge problems and making this problem much worse. The, as Mr. Rogan said, the DPW was out, and actually, they were out handling the emergency situations first. I was over, I was over on Phelps Street on Saturday night. By the time I got over there, the water had subsided, and the residents were there doing the cleanup themselves. And I think on Monday, DPW went over there first, just first to try to do it with the vacuum cleaner, but then it did require the use of heavy equipment, and they, they did go over and clean that up. And I just want to repeat, I congratulate all of our, all of our city employees who went out to this response, and I also want to thank the residents that I saw out cleaning gutters and trying to protect their neighborhood. Fortunately, as I said, the tornado did not touch down in Scranton, but it does give you cause for alarm to think of the possibility of how bad it could've been. Last week, we had a request concerning the naming of the Rockwell Bridge for General Went. We have completed the necessary paperwork to begin that process, and we will continue to keep following up on that and moving it forward. As was mentioned, the modeling plans for the proceeds of the sewer authority have not been complete and presented to us, as far as I know. Nothing has been presented to us. There was a suggestion that sessions be held with individual council members as an idea of preparing, preparing for any potential meeting. As I said before, those sessions are probably still will be available to council members if they choose to do that. As the week went on and discussing with my colleagues, we did have a very successful work session when we went through the sale of, sorry, the lease of the Scranton Parking Authority. It's a model that my colleagues seem to be very comfortable with. It did produce a lot of information, so we have been talking with the administration, and if we can put together something like that, that would be public, open to the press, from talking to my colleagues, we seem in general accord that that would be a useful way to get this information out. We are encouraging the administration to get that session together as quick as possible. There's a lot of different players involved from the, from the administration side, and there's also schedules amongst council members that also have to be prepared. So, we are trying to get that together as fast as possible. Touching on pension reform, I'm echoing what my colleagues have said, the encouraging thing to me was that the Fraternal Order of Police actually stepped up and became very interested in correcting this problem that we have. I congratulate them for taking an interest in this and actually partnering with the city in rectifying this situation. From talking to my colleagues, we seem in general accord that that would be a useful way to get this information out. We are encouraging the administration to get that session together as quick as possible. There's a lot of different players involved from the administration side, and there's also schedules amongst council members at House also have to be prepared. So we are trying to get that together as fast as possible. Touching on pension reform, I'm echoing what my colleagues have said. The encouraging thing to me was that the Fraternal Order of Police actually stepped up and became very interested in correcting this problem that we have. I congratulate them for taking an interest in this and actually partnering with the city in rectifying this situation. I am encouraged by the recent developments as we've been working through these different things, including increased contributions to the pension plan and also agreeing to have a third-party administrator. There is a new spirit of cooperation amongst the administration, the council, and in our city's union forces. I think everyone realizes that this time right now, this is our last chance to get this right. We've sold our last asset. We've leased the parking authority, we've recovered, we've got out of some bad debt that we had, and this will be our last opportunity to do this correctly. And it is just so important that we do it right. And I'm confident that the administration is working on that, and I'm also confident that my colleagues are also working towards getting this and get it done right. And that's all we have.
5B for introduction, an ordinance amending file of the Council Number 95, 2015, an ordinance entitled amending file of the Council Number 79 of 2015, an ordinance amending file of the Council Number 145 of 2007 entitled, an ordinance renaming the emergency and municipal services tax to local service tax and by imposing a withholding of $52 for the calendar year 2015, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by increasing the local services tax withholding from $52 to $156 for the calendar year 2015, and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2015 under and pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act, Act 511 of 1965, PL 1257, 53 PS, Section 6924.101 et cec., and the Municipalities Recovery Act, excuse me, Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987, PL 246, 53 PS, Section 11701.101 et cec., and their respective amendments effective retroactive to January 1, 2016. This tax is expected to generate approximately $4,595,000 in revenue in calendar year 2017 by enabling the city of Scranton to continue to levy the local services tax at the fiscal year 2016 rate for fiscal year 2017, for a total maximum local services rate of $156 for the fiscal year 2017 effective retroactive to January 1, 2017, and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2017. Emergency certificate attached.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5B be introduced to its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all is in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, the ayes have it, so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to move items, item 5B to 6th and 7th orders. Be considered for final passage based on the attached emergency certificate.
Second. On the question, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, so moved.
6th order, 6A reading by title, file of the Council Number 91, 2017, an ordinance authorizing the installation of two two-hour parking-only restrictions, Monday through Friday, on the 500 block of Clay Avenue, directly in front of the Beth Shalom Congregation.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, so moved.
6B, formerly 5B, reading by title, file of the Council Number 92, 2017, an ordinance amending file of the Council Number 95, 2015, an ordinance entitled amending file of the Council Number 79 of 2015, an ordinance amending file of the Council Number 145 of 2007 entitled, an ordinance renaming the emergency and municipal services tax to local service tax and by imposing a withholding of $52 for the calendar year 2015, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by increasing the local services tax withholding from $52 to $156 for the calendar year 2015, and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2015 under and pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act, Act 511 of 1965, PL 1257, 53 PS, Section 6924.101 et cec., and the Municipalities Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987, PL 246, 53 PS, Section 11701.101 et cec., and their respective amendments effective retroactive to January 1, 2016. This tax is expected to generate approximately $4,595,000 in revenue in calendar year 2017 by enabling the city of Scranton to continue to levy the local services tax at the fiscal year 2016 rate for fiscal year 2017, for a total maximum local services rate of $156 for the fiscal year 2017 effective retroactive to January 1, 2017, and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2017. Emergency certificate attached.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B, what is your pleasure?
I move that item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, so moved. If there's anyone who would like to address council on this emergency legislation, you may do so at this time. Just please state your name.
Laura Jeffries.
Thank you.
And I'm concerned, I was ricking a lot of notes as you were reading the B category, you read it twice, and I was thinking, when do I get a chance to say something about this? Because this deals with the increase, is that what it's going to be? Is it going to be retroactive? Can you explain that?
It's actually something that's been in place for about two years. So it's a continuation of the $3 tax that they take out of your pay each week.
I have a part-time job.
If you make less than $15,600, it won't apply to you.
Okay, because I have to pay $18 additional, I guess.
No, if you make less than $15,600, you won't have to pay anything additional. And if you've been working, it's already been being taken out of your pay.
Okay. So at what time do we get to see when these are going to be discussed prior to them appearing in this paper?
This was passed under emergency certificate, so this is your opportunity.
Oh, this is the opportunity now?
Yes.
Okay, like I had spoken with Congressman Rogan, and I just wanted to know the process, because I am relatively new to the city, returning, really, I grew up here, but returning. And just want to know the process, because there are a few things I'd like to discuss, but just wanted to know exactly when to do that.
Yeah, for the majority of items we do here, you either get one or two times to speak on it, or three times. So this is an emergency, because it's financial, we have to go backwards so we can start collecting, we were permitted to keep collecting this tax, it's already been in place. So for the most part, you usually have at least three opportunities to speak on something.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And just as a follow-up, one item to mention, and normally WNEP is pretty good with their coverage, but they did have an article that I would say was very misleading. The headline was "Scranton to Triple LST Tax," when as Council President Wexler mentioned, the rate has been the same for the past two years. This legislation continues the rate at that level. And as was also mentioned, if you make less than $15,600, this tax does not apply to you. So it doesn't apply to most senior citizens, people who are on a fixed income on Social Security. It doesn't apply to those type of earnings. It's only on earned income within the city. So for the vast majority of people watching, for a lot of people that live in the city, this does not apply. Now, if you live outside of the city and work in the city and make over $15,000, you would pay this tax. But as was mentioned, just to reiterate, it is not an increase.
7th order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the Council Number 90, 2017, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application, and if successful, a grant agreement and accept the funds related thereto through the BJA-FY-17 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant Program Smart Policing Initiative in the amount of $571,847 to implement the alternative to arresting addicts program.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 120, 2017, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for Patrick Quinn, 607 Sunset Streets, Clark Summit, PA, for installation of lettering that will be thermoformed dimensional cellulose acetate butyrate plastic pin-mounted industry standard Times New Roman copper-colored that will read AV Restaurant and Lounge, 320 Penn Avenue. Front door approved for current red color or may be changed to black or mahogany without having to go before the Harb again.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
B.
B.
Second.
It's a defective iPad.
It is a defective, it says Committee on Finance.
Yeah, I know, I saw it.
That's why it's a test. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 121, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement for the West Lackwana Avenue Bridge, document number is noted, by and between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Transportation and the City of Scranton for Commonwealth's performance of City of Scranton-owned bridge project.
What is the recommendation of the temporary chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As temporary chair for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 122, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement for the Elm Street Bridge, document number is noted, by and between Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Transportation and the City of Scranton for Commonwealth's performance of City of Scranton-owned bridge project.
What is the recommendation of the temporary chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As temporary chair for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 123, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement for the North Main Avenue Bridge, document number is noted, by and between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Transportation and the City of Scranton for Commonwealth's performance of City of Scranton-owned bridge project.
What is the recommendation of the temporary chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As temporary chair for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F, formerly 6B, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the Council Number 92, 2017, an ordinance amending file of the Council Number 95, 2015, an ordinance entitled amending file of the Council Number 79 of 2015, an ordinance amending file of the Council Number 145 of 2007 entitled, an ordinance renaming the emergency and municipal services tax to local service tax and by imposing a withholding of $52 for the calendar year 2015, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by increasing the local services tax withholding from $52 to $156 for the calendar year 2015, and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2015 under and pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act, Act 511 of 1965, PL 1257, 53 PS, Section 6924.101 et cec., and the Municipalities Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987, PL 246, 53 PS, Section 11701.101 et cec., and their respective amendments effective retroactive to January 1, 2016. This tax is expected to generate approximately $4,595,000 in revenue in calendar year 2017 by enabling the city of Scranton to continue to levy the local services tax at the fiscal year 2016 rate for fiscal year 2017, for a total maximum local services rate of $156 for the fiscal year 2017 effective retroactive to January 1, 2017, and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2017. Emergency certificate attached.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.